Regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. Tonight, we're going to start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Scott Morgan. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Tonight will be a voting meeting. The minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled for Monday, July 10th of 2023. Ms. Nash, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We have four members present tonight. Our colleagues Toy, Barr, and Donavick are unable to be here tonight due to other obligations, some family, some work, but they regret that they will not be able to participate tonight. Any items requiring five votes would not be possible tonight. I bring attention to that for item number 14, the waiver petition from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2023030202 for the Yo-Yo Spa One LLC. I have removed that from the agenda, and that will be voted on as a regular meeting unfinished business item on July 10th of 2023. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the meeting minutes of June 6, 2023.
So move. Support.
We have a motion by McCullough, support by Morgan. Are there any additions or comments on the minutes from the council? I see none, any additions or comments from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes pass. The council has set aside 30 minutes for audience communication. Anybody in the audience at this time can address the council on any items that are not on the agenda this, well, this agenda this evening. If, I think we're going to get started with our representative Matt Colizar from the state legislature, who's going to give us an update. Mr. Colizar, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council members. It's good to see you all again. What I want to get into really quick has to do with a little Lansing update. In particular, I know a lot of people are talking about the budget, which it is my hope, that the, my sincere hope, that the budget is solved and we officially submit one to the governor for signature tomorrow, but I have this distinct feeling it might be the very early morning hours of Wednesday, hopefully not longer than that, but I will be stocking up on Red Bull and coffee and anything else that'll get me through the day. I see Councilmember McCullough is way ahead of me.
Give you some.
So what I really want to talk about today, though, is to make sure that the council is aware of a law that, that goes into effect this Friday, and that's Michigan's hands-free driving law. This starts June 30th. Now, what this is, is it makes Michigan the 26th hands-free state in the country, which means when you are driving a car, you cannot have your phone in your hand. You can use a third part, like your Bluetooth system, like an Android Auto or Apple CarPlay, anything like that through your console. If you have a car mount, you can use a car mount with single-tap functions as well. So quickly swiping to answer, maybe you're getting an alert about a map on your phone, or you still want to use that GPS on a car mount, you can do that as well. What you cannot do is drive with your phone in your hand. I get often asked, what if I'm at a stoplight? No, you cannot have your phone in your hand while you are operating a vehicle. In other states where they've enacted this legislation, they have seen, they've seen accidents due to distracted driving fall anywhere from nine to 20%. These laws have been proven time and again to save lives. Like I said, Michigan is not a trailblazer here with the 26th state to do it. Also, the Fourth of July weekend is the deadliest weekend statistically for distracted driving. That's why the June 30th implementation, implementation date was so important. And with that, MSP will be beefing up enforcement of this, so I would strongly encourage just for, you don't want, let alone saving lives, but you don't want to get a ticket, making sure that you are staying off your phones and just driving. And I don't know if I'm allowed to do questions with this round, but I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
I think we're all set.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
As always, thank you for all you do. Feel free to reach out anytime with any questions, concerns, or otherwise. Good to see you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative.
We'll go to anybody else wishing to address the council? Please identify yourself with your name and your address. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. My name is Carla Truxell. I live at 29583 Jaclyn Drive, and I, Councilmember McIntyre invited me to come here and share what our nonprofit is up to. So we have, my husband and I are the founders of ESPN Survivors.
Excuse me just one moment. What? Excuse me, just one moment. I am not able to, okay.
We're having some technical difficulties.
Thank you.
Sorry.
There we go.
You might have got a bonus 12 seconds there.
Yes, you did.
You're all set. Keep going.
My husband and I are the founders of ESPN Survivors. We're a local nonprofit dedicated to mental health education, and we have six coping skills that we focus on. One of them is movement, and we have animals that help us teach these coping skills. And so we combine the two and create an event called Movin' with Moose. So we have, I have cards here with me. The event officially starts in two weeks on July 10th. It's a challenge. It runs from July 10th to September 10th, ending on World Suicide Prevention Day, and we're asking everybody to get out there and get movin'. And when you sign up, you can choose whether to walk, run, swim, skate, row. I feel like I'm forgetting something. But the idea is to accumulate miles. When you register, you're just putting a goal of how many miles you'd like to accomplish, and this is also a fundraiser for us. So I'm just here to share that this is what we have going on and how you can support ESPN Survivors. And I have cards, if I can pass them out to you guys?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council tonight? Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Amir Jamil. I'm actually on behalf of my business address. That address is 17876 Farmington Road here in Livonia, 48152. Hoping to come in and speak to you folks about, we're having an issue with our business. Our business is kind of located in a pretty bad area where the main, main building is. We're kind of towards the back end of our parking lot, and we're having really bad issues with visibility. We were formerly Biogenetics Diagnostics. We've now changed over to an urgent care called Urgent Care 365. When we were Biogenetics during the COVID pandemic, we were seeing about 4,000 people a day, just in general, taking care of anyone with COVID-related issues, anything like that. Right now, we are having an issue with just signage up front. Unfortunately, what the landlord is providing us is not adequate. It's such a small sign that we're having issues just generating any foot traffic through the area. We understand that Livonia has a very stringent rule, rules set for signage, and we're wondering if we can make it maybe a temporary seven-day signage rule or something where we can change it, where we can get maybe a larger sign out there if possible.
Well, thank you for coming out, sir. There are processes set up for you to do that, and I appreciate you coming tonight, but this is not the process.
Okay.
So if you go to the inspection department and the zoning board of appeals, there are opportunities for you to request a zoning variance or a temporary sign or something of that nature. The council does not normally vote on those things, and we can't take that up on our own accord.
Okay.
One of the things you said, though, is that you're a landlord.
Yes.
You would have to loop that person in as well.
Okay.
Because if their landlord owns the property, they would have the real initiative to do that. They may want to partner with you and do that on your behalf or with you, but you would need their assistance as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing business in Livonia.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anybody else for the council? Seeing none, audience communication is closed. Tonight, we're joined by our city attorney, Paul Bernier, our city clerk, Ms. Nash, our city treasurer, Linda Sheel, our city council office director, Sarah Kasperitz, economic planning director, Mark Tarmina, and our city engineer, Todd Zalinsik. We also have the chair of our Greenleaf Commission, Jim Bearinghouse, in the back there as well. So with that, we're going to go to the council comment section. Does anybody on the council have any comments? We'll start with Ms. McIntyre.
I have several items, Mr. Chair. First is, on behalf of this council, and I know many in the city, we congratulate you and your beautiful wife, Casey, and Katie.
We're supposed to tell anybody about Casey, you know?
I know. It was a long, Spree was a long week. Casey McCullough, Katie Jolly.
Casey, I do not have a baby.
We know that. We know that. Anyway, you and your beautiful wife, Katie, and Lexi, and Claire, and JD, on the arrival of Jack Gabriel Jolly, born on June 20th, correct?
Correct.
And we had the opportunity to see him. He's beautiful. We're all extremely happy for you. I do think you should have worked Spree into the name because he was born on the first day of Spree. And if the Spree Committee is listening, I do think that young Jack Gabriel Jolly should be given some sort of lifetime passes, because really, if you're born on the first day of Spree, that's pretty special. So anyway, extremely happy for all of you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And speaking of Spree, our council representative, Toy is not here. Council representative to the Spree, the officially Livonia Anniversary Committee, Mr. Barr is the alternate for that, attended many meetings. It's impossible to adequately thank the Livonia Anniversary Committee. What did I say? Mr. Barr? That would be Scott Morgan, not Scott Barr. Anyway, again, it was a long Spree week. But anyways, Councilmember Morgan is the alternate and attended many of the meetings, but it would be impossible to adequately express the appreciation to the Livonia Anniversary Board and committees and the new president, Sam Kerr-Magnow, who did a phenomenal job, and the rest of the executive board, the board. Kaylee Reed, Kaylee Kavanaugh Reed, was hired as the executive director just a few months before the Spree started, and she did an outstanding job. And this year's Spree really went as smoothly, and everything was like Spree in years past, where things just went smoothly and there were no issues that we were aware of other than, unfortunately, for the first time in the Spree's 50-year, 50-year history, the fireworks had to be canceled last night due to inclement weather. It was a very, very difficult decision. Generally, on a regular Spree evening, you can kind of see, wait and see what happens with the weather, because the, the festival goers can evacuate to the Edgar Arena. Unfortunately, by about 5:30 on Sunday, the last night of Spree fireworks, we have many people who start gathering on Ford Field along the streets and then all the parks adjoining or in the area. And it was determined that with the threat of severe weather, which should come through, there was no way in, in good conscience and really, job number one is public safety, that, that we could allow the Spree to continue. So the decision was made in consultation with Brian Kahn, the city's emergency management director, Mayor Brosnan, the police department, the Livonia Anniversary Committee, very, very difficult decision, but the Spree closed last night at 6 o'clock. Tremendously disappointing. A lot of people lost a lot of money in that, but our number-one job and the Spree Anniversary Committee, all the vendors feel the same way, is to keep the public safe. And there were a lot of, as happens, a lot of comments on social media, people claiming that the citizens should get a refund for the money that they, the tax money that would have been spent on fireworks. Spree is a private nonprofit organization. Livonia taxpayer funds are not expended in support of any of the Spree activities, including the fireworks, the carnival, the shows. So thank you to everyone for a tremendous job. And then finally, on a sad note, someone that is known to many of us, James Jim Pardo, passed away on June 13th at only age 77. Many of us knew Jim through his 30 years of outstanding service to the Livonia Police Department. We also knew him from his active membership in the Livonia American Legion. He was a Vietnam veteran, veteran, was an Army commander, and just an outstanding gentleman. And it's a, it leaves a big loss for our community, for the Legion, and certainly for his family. And our deepest condolences to his wonderful wife, Helen, who many of us know as well. So maybe if we could just take a moment of silence for retired police officer and Vietnam veteran, Jim Pardo. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. I'll add to that just very quickly. He was also the longtime director of the 16th District Court Work Program.
Thank you.
And I had an opportunity to work with him for many years, and he was a very good guy, solid guy, and he had a lot of really great stories, particularly about being a police officer in Livonia after Vietnam and his experience there. So it's a big loss for the city and a big loss for his, his family, of course, but he left a great legacy. So thank you. We'll go to Mr. McCullough and then Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Council President. We had, we just recently celebrated a birthday in the McCullough household. This lovely little lady right here just turned nine past Friday, correct? And we made it to the Spree for a Spree birthday party, and it got a little rain, but we suffered through it. And she's nine going on 21. So happy birthday, Harper.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I just want to circle back a little bit to Jim Pardo. He was a, he was a dear friend of mine. He was my first supervisor in the police department when I started back in 1995. And him, he became a dear friend, and his wife Helen, a beautiful lady. And he'll be sorely missed, and I, my, just my condolences to his family and Helen. And it's just a terrible loss. Good friend, good friend to the community and an amazing person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. I have a birthday that I also have to announce. My son JD is turning eight years old on the 30th, so I want to wish him a happy birthday. He'll be out tomorrow with his golf lessons at Whispering Willow. So be careful driving anywhere around the golf course. With that being said, I want to make an announcement real quick again. Item 14, if you're here for that item, has been removed from the agenda. Will take place on July 10th. And with that being said, we will move to our scheduled agenda. We have reports from the mayor and other city officials, specifically a communication from the Department of Finance dated May 30th, 2023, forwarding retirement system annual reports for the fiscal year of '22, a communication from the Department of Finance dated June 1st, forwarding various financial statements of the city of Livonia, ending for the period of time April 30th of '23, and another communication from the Department of Finance dated June 1st, '23, forwarding departmental purchase reports for the month ending May 31 of 2023. With that being said, we will move to the consent agenda. Tonight, that is items one through 11. These items were previously studied at the study meeting and found to require no additional study and will be voted on as a single item. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
We have a motion from Morgan, a support from McCullough. Is there any audience comment on the consent agenda, items one through 11? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, please take the vote on those items.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The consent agenda passes. We will move on to unfinished business. Item 12 is a report out of the Finance and Budget Committee meeting of May 31st of 2023. Topic was annual audit reports for December 1st, '21 through November 30th of '22. Our vice chair of that council committee, Ms. McIntyre, will be giving that report. Ms. McIntyre, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And as you mentioned, council resolution 367-02, the topic of annual audit reports. The meeting was convened at 7:02 PM, and it was led by committee chair Scott Barr. Plant Moran gave a, an overview of their annual audit of city finances. The city once again was given an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion an organization can receive. Just a few key, key points. This is the first year that GASB 87 standards were applied. That is the General Auditing Standards Board, and I'm not going to go into details because GASB standards are notoriously detailed and a little bit tedious, but it was, it presented some significant challenges for the city and for our auditors. The city has more than 8,000 journal entries. Those are, those are entries to our accounting journal during the year. That's a lot of journal entries. There are only two errors out of 8,000. So that is essentially a six sigma, meaning about one defect out of a million, give or take. The general fund revenue exceeded the general fund expenditures by approximately $304,000. This was greater than the budget, as we were expecting to be roughly break even. And what that means is our, our general fund budget are the dollars that the city can spend on an unrestricted basis, not, not exactly. But a lot of, in Livonia, we fund a lot of programs, the millage, public safety, I'm sorry, public safety roads, library, through special purpose millages, and those dollars, special purpose millages, those dollars can only be used for the, for the expenditures that are specified in the millage. General fund is all the other tax dollars that comes in. The fund balance that pays the annual $550,000 debt service on the district court, district court building is down 863,000 over three years, and it sits at about $80,000. Fines and forfeitures have dropped significantly below pre-pandemic levels. So the city will likely need to subsidize that fund with an increase to the surcharge added to each infraction and transfer from the general fund. The defined benefit pension system, so that's the, those are the city retirees that received a pension, is funded at 86%, down from 104% a year ago. That is due to the performance of the stock market over the last 12 months. The defined benefit post-employment healthcare system, known as the VIBA, is 56% funded, down 68% from last year, again, due to performance in the stock and investment markets. And the general vent, the general fund balance starts, stands at 23.3%, which is significantly more than the recommended minimum of 16.7%. So what that means is, is it's a best practice that municipality have a minimum of 16.7% balance of its general fund available if the city needed to cover expenses. We're at 23.3%. And let's see, did I want to make another comment about this? No, I, I think that's it. So the committee recommends that we receive and file the 2022 audit report submitted. This item will remain in committee. The meeting adjourned at 8:04 PM. And as you can see, we covered the minutes of this meeting at tonight's regular, regular agenda meeting.
Thank you very much. There's no action of the council required for this at this time. We'll move on to unfinished business. Item 13 is a block party request from Tracy Nolte to be held on Saturday, August 5th, from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Marie Street and Court, between Nelson Street and Minton Avenue, with a rain date of Saturday, August 12th of 2023. Is Tracy Nolte here tonight? Okay, do I have a motion by the council?
I'll offer an approving-forsaken discussion.
Do I have support?
I'll support that.
Okay. Mr. McCullough, you have any comments?
Through the chair to Sarah, do you know, have we heard anything from the petitioner? All right. Usually, it's the council's process to, we would like to see the petitioner show up just to kind of give us a rundown of what's going on. I know that Ms. Nolte's had this in the past, and with the unfortunate of her not being here in absence, I'm still fine. This is something that's been in years past. I'll be happy to support it. Thank you.
Any other comment from the council about the audience? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, please take the vote on 13.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. 13 passes. Again, 14 was removed and will take place on the regular agenda of July 10th. We'll move on to 15. Is, that will be a roll call for a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law to Section 040 of Title 13, Chapter 8, water service rates and revenues to provide for changes in the water service consumption rates to become effective with the first billing on or after July 1st of 2023. First reading was given on this matter by Councilman Brandon McCullough on June 5th of 2023.
Council President, I'd be happy to offer a second read.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Is there any other comment from the council from the audience on 15? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. 15 is approved. And I'm just going to draw attention real quick. 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 all have to do with our annual water rate approvals here. And these are items that I'll just note for the record. Are revenue neutral for the city? These are purely driven by the cost of the water that we receive from the Great Lakes Water and Sewage and the maintenance of our own water facility and infrastructure here in the city of Livonia. Item 16, again, a roll call vote for the proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances to Section 050 of Title 13, Chapter 8, for water service rates and revenues to provide changes in water service consumption rates to become effective July 1 of '23. This item, first reading was given by Scott Barr on June 5th. Ms. McIntyre?
Chair, I'll offer a second read.
Thank you very much. Any comment from the council? Any comment from the audience? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, take the vote on 16, please.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. 16 passes. 17, again, a roll call vote for the proposed amendment to Livonia Court of Ordinances, Section 050 of Title 13, Chapter 28, for industrial waste surcharge to provide for changes in the industrial waste surcharge to become effective July 1st. First reading on this was given by Councilmember Rob Donavick on June 5th. Can I have a second reading, please? Mr. Morgan?
I'll offer a second reading.
Thank you very much. Is there any comment from the council? Any comment from the audience on 17? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. 17 passes. 18, again, a roll call vote for the proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances, Section 120 of Title 13, Chapter 20, Livonia Sewage Disposal System to provide for changes to the sewer disposal and maintenance rates to become effective on July 1st of '23. First reading was given by Councilmember Morgan on June 5th. Mr. Morgan?
I'll offer a second read.
Thank you, sir. Any comment from the council on 18? Any comment from the audience on 18? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. 18 passes. 19 is our last water rate item of the night. This is a proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Section 130 of Title 13, Chapter 20, Livonia Sewage Disposal System to provide for changes to special rates for designated users to become effective on July 1st of '23. First reading was given by Scott Barr on June 5th of '23. Can I have a second reading?
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a second read.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre. Is there any comment from the council on 19? Any comment from the audience on 19? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. 19 passes. Item 20 is an adoption of a resolution placing a special assessment upon references, excuse me, reference properties whose owners have not paid charges connected with the 2022 sidewalk program, Contract 22G. These are single-lot assessments, and this comes to us from the Office of the Treasurer, citing Council Resolution 30-23 and 71-23. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. McIntyre?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Motion by McIntyre, support by McCullough. We do have our treasurer, Ms. Sheel, here tonight. Ms. Sheel, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, President Jolly and fellow council members. On April 1st of this year, there were 138 invoices sent out for a total of $79,541.87. And as of now, we have collected, well, as of last week, as of June 21st, we collected 65% so far. There are four residents that have requested installment payments, and following this council resolution and approval of the minutes, a second letter will be going out on July 11th. The residents have until September 30th to pay in full. If not, then the amount will go on their tax bill with an additional 10%.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.[1737.81]